Call it May 14th Dixon County Commission. Please stand for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have approval agenda, introduction of guests, please stand. Your name, don't everybody go, yeah, okay, you don't stand at once.
All three, yeah.
I'm Kayla.
Kayla.
Petula.
And you're doing this for government class?
Yeah, government.
Okay, Petula.
I'm Matthew Ham, I'm here for moral support.
Moral support.
I'm Hannah Wilson.
Thank you very much.
And are you seniors or?
I'm a senior.
Okay.
I graduated.
And you've graduated already, okay, I recognize a couple of you from work. You work at McDonald's, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, appreciate your work up there, but nice to have you here too.
When you get done, I'm sure you do have something we need to sign, so, and when we're done with the meeting, we'll sign it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ringer. Approval of the agenda. Additions to the current one would be considered lease renewal for the track loader for the highway department. Any other additions, Brad?
Yes.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
The move is in second, any other discussion? Not all the voters say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the April 30th work session and regular meeting, funded expenditures of $283,653.10, wire payments of $15,680.90, and abatement of $3,456.98, and added tax of $1,587.32.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
The move is in second, we have any other discussion? Not all the voters say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Commissioners, Thomas can report, Flynn?
We had our meeting with department heads earlier, and so it's kind of repeated a little bit the report I gave to them, in that I was one of the commissioners, all of us were there, and Brad was there for our association county meetings in Wichita, and I thought it was pretty interesting, and, you know, it kind of gave us a chance to find out some of the issues of some of the other counties, and get a chance to visit with some of the other county commissioners. I did just attend, I did come back before the last day though, so I missed the last half day of the meeting. Central Kansas Mental Health, our board meeting for this month is canceled, the director was having some surgery, and she has a cancer issue that she's dealing with, so our thoughts and prayers are with her, we plan on meeting again in June for our next meeting, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alan.
Yes, like I reported earlier, we thankful for the rains that we've gotten this past week or two here, that it's really what's needed rainfall that we needed for the grow crops this summer, and it's been, like I say, we've missed the bad storms, but we've gotten nice rains out of the rains that we've gotten. I want to thank the postal workers that we had the postal drive for food, and the blue bags that the postal service delivered to homes, and then also picked up food that they delivered down to the food pantry, and it's a one-year event that they do, and we're very thankful for the food pantry that they get a large amount of food in, and I think this year was like 3,500 pounds of food, so it was, like I say, a good day to get the shell stock there at the food pantry.
Yeah, I also attended the KAC conference this year again, Dustin and Janelle, Dustin Parks and Janelle Dickerhoff.
No.
Talking over, gave an update on the Economic Development Corporation, how the interviews are going for the department, or the head of the economic development, they've interviewed two, and offered a person a position, and I'll know later, and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have information on that.
And I think of the two individuals they interviewed, it was a second interview.
You're right.
They had a larger pool.
Yeah, they interviewed six to begin with.
And narrowed it down.
Of course, also attended department head meeting, I was at the noble township with Brad last Monday night, on an issue with vacaying road and a bridge, also last, since we didn't have a meeting, the 30th North Central Regional Planting Commission was in Dixon County, where we went to, had lunch with Joe Snuffy, who the North Central Regional funded part, I mean, did fund, but grant, or I shouldn't say loan, to Joe Snuffy's, Rawhide, Porter Correll, they worked with them, and then the Abilene Water Treatment Plant out there, and that was probably 15 years ago that they, or longer that they put that in, I don't remember when it was, that's all I have. Brad, want to report?
Sure. First item of the guide, is just kind of give you a little update on the bridges, John I know did in our department head meeting, but we've got the two bridges that are currently underway being replaced, along 1900 Avenue, King Constructors working on it, progressing well, given the fact that we've had rains, but they've got their, quite a bit of their dry piling installed, and they're continuing, and it's progressing, and we haven't been apprised of any issues there, our crews are working over in two block of Old Forty, and given, given the fact that they've been rained out a few days, it's going well, as John indicated, they did get the first piling put down the last couple of days, and it's always, you never know what the geology is in that ground, or how far you're going to go, but they went down about 48 feet on the first one, or about 54 feet on the second one, so that's pretty deep, but we've gone farther on projects, so at least they hit something solid, and they'll continue. Water, like I say, has been a little bit of an issue. Another issue we've had, and I have a problem understanding this one, is traffic. We've had three incidents where people have driven right through our barricades, didn't see them on Old Forty, most recent one I think was Tuesday, where a 19-year-old young man just blew through them, and didn't ever even attempt to stop, so fortunately we haven't had anybody injured, but the guys have put up flags, they've got the big billboard sign out there, they moved it closer, we've done everything but put somebody alive out there to wave a light in their face to let people know the road's closed, so I just, I don't quite understand that, but it has been an issue. We've got four different signs between Abilene and that site that say the written road's closed ahead, so anyhow.
Damage to their vehicles when they do that?
Absolutely, yeah, took the windshield out of one the other day, and did some damage to his parents' car's hood, and friend, and, but he hit it at 60 mile an hour and just shattered it, I mean, we're talking the big billboard, you know, signs that sit on the middle of the road to stop you from going any farther, so. I will also say that Lake County Township, they've done a very good job of maintaining the road around there for local traffic, and I've had a few calls, but they've done a bang-up job so far trying to keep that smoothed out and passable for the people that have to get to have the machine installed in that area, and so keep them from having to drive around, we very much appreciate that, so. I'll kind of do the noble township towards the end, I'll jump past that, but we have received our federal funds transfer money, $503,000 was deposited from KDOT Monday, and that's the money that we requested that will go to pay for 1900 Avenue Bridge, that's our five-year bridge project money, and as you recall, we elected to go ahead and put in, put in a request to transfer that out, so that we have it and can control it, so if something happens in Topeka that goes south, they can't go in and rob that money if it's sitting in KDOT's coffers, so we have received that.
Also on that, Brad, I was looking on the website, that's not posted, you know, it's one of the notices, that the bridge is closed out there.
On our website?
Yeah.
I'll have to look and see.
Yeah, I just looked at it this morning.
Okay. I'll make sure it gets updated. We got Old Forty on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on there.
Might have been on the books since when I was doing it.
Yeah.
And you're packing under the red tab, I just give you that, it's a notice to K-CAM where they have chosen to increase some of the limits on them, three, in three different areas, one's due to the changes in the Kansas tort claims act, and then also some of the increases in other crime limits and sublimits, they're all very positive changes for us, I mean, it gives us more, more coverage, but they just wanted to let us know that. So I just want to let you know, again, another positive thing on behalf of K-CAM that they're working out for our best interest there. We have received the petition from Elmo, the final petition, and I have the one here that has been sent in to submit to you, and I'll give the bar, so it's officially been received now. That is in your packet under the blue tab, you've got a copy of that petition from John and Linda Donnelly, who live in Elmo. On the back of that, there is a map that shows the area in red that we're, that they had petition to vacate, and if you hold that with, as you read it, with the wording to the bottom, the top is north, so we're looking at the western half of Elmo, and kind of in the middle of the picture there, to the left, just the window is where the Donnelys reside, and they own all the property on at least one side, if not both sides of each one of those parcels. We've also communicated with the two other property owners, the southwest, and then one in the north central part of town, and also concur and agree with having those.
Is this where they live?
They live, no, it's up in, in the middle, right?
Right there?
Yeah, I think that's, I can't quite see where you're pointing.
Well.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, I guess I could tell you at first upon it, because it says that, so, what we're vacating, or what they're requesting, is to vacate all the areas that were planted as a public right-of-way, were never, over the last century, have never been developed. As you can see, it might be a little difficult to see, but some of the areas, especially the one on West Second Street, on the far west end of town, there's actually structures and a part of a home that's been built in the right-of-way.
Yeah, see that down there?
I see that.
Yeah, so, other areas up towards the top, it's all being farmed, it's never been, there's no road there, so it really, from my standpoint, it really only makes sense to vacate it, because it will go back on the property owners' taxes, and they'll, they'll have ownership and control.
In that way, they go to sell it, they won't have to.
They won't have to deal with all that, and I know the Donnelys have talked to Linda, one of the things that they wanted to do, once they get it vacated, is they want to get it all combined in one parcel, so they don't get multiple tax payments every year, which we can certainly help them do as well, so. If you recall, kind of in the, about the center, half of the picture down, we just recently did another vacate there for the hardballs, it hasn't appeared on here yet, because we haven't, haven't got the thing updated, but we're slowly getting some of those areas cleaned up, as, as we kind of set out for a couple of years ago, and had talked with township, so. As far as today, having received that, then you would, your next procedure would be to accept that and send a notice of hearing for a public hearing on that. I'll give Mark the notice of hearing, and then you can deal with that here when we get done, but, and I've got a date that we can, we can use for that, and we've got everything ready to mail out to people to give them the legal notice, so.
What's the date going to be on that, Brad?
I would recommend June 18th, that'd give us enough time to get the notices out, give people about 30 days to, to plan, so I always like to give everybody a third-day window, right?
Yep.
So, June 18th at 11:10 is what I recommend, that's the thing. So, if there's no questions on that, I'll move on, so, just wanted to let you know that we were with the fair board, we were talking here last week, and they, they had their meeting, and they would like to pursue the possible, I'd suggested to Brad that, you know, we might want to look at putting some cameras and a security, primary firearm system out there, it's not protected, and they thought that was a rather good idea, so I agreed to help do that with them, you know, so what we, I ordered the equipment for them, knowing what, what it is that we need, and we'll get that in, and they're willing to, myself, Chancy, and maybe Seth, and some of their board will go out on a, on a weekend or something, volunteer a time, and do the labor, and get that stuff put in, I think that would be a good enhancement for that, to help protect that building, so.
Can that come out of the capital out late then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing, only expenses we'll have will be for the hardware and stuff.
Right.
I ordered that through the county, so it'll be delivered here, and so we're basically paying for that at cost, and the rest of the expense will be donated labor, will donate it, or do it that way, so I think it'll be a good project, and certainly.
How many cameras you talking about?
About eight total.
Both that many?
Yeah, that'll cover the room, one in each room inside, and then one on each exterior, so, I think, you know, that's certainly something that's, that's nice to have, the more important aspect of that, I think, is the firearm system.
Yeah.
To put that in, monitor that, so we don't have, if something does happen, you know, in the middle of the night, before the flames are through the roof, we have notice, and we can send the right personnel, so, and when we're, the, the big expense for a lot of stuff, is the labor to pull cables and run through the ceilings and stuff, and if we're doing firearm stuff, we might as well pull some video, and it makes it much easier, so, a lot more efficient trying to get all that done at the same time, so. We'll work around the schedule, obviously it's busy out there on the weekends, we may have to do it on a weekday, but we'll figure that out here once the equipment gets here, and I think it'll be a good addition. We did get the, that extra door order, said take about three, four weeks to get the hardware and stuff in, and then we'll schedule that around their schedule out there, and get that installed too, so.
I meant to ask Laura, how did the last weekend, did you hear anything?
You know, I was going to ask her too.
I forgot about it.
That kind of got sidetracked, I was out there for the car show from 8:00 in the morning till about 2:00, 2:30 in the afternoon, they had a good crowd, I did not go over into the livestock area, but I was there with John Hoker, and he was there with his car, and his son came over several times, and, and I know he walked over, and his wife was there in the, in the showing some animals, and we didn't have any indication or any issues, it was very busy, I really think, at least in my opinion, the food booths and stuff would certainly augment.
Right.
You know, the, the animal show too, so.
I think, as long as there wasn't congestion, traffic, like that, that would be the only thing.
Yeah, they had a good turnout, I mean, they had a lot of people out there when I, when I came and left, and the, and the animal parks and stuff, so, I've heard nothing negative about it, so I don't know if that's a good sign or not, but, yeah, I, I was thinking about that when Laura was giving her report too.
I did too.
It was on Esker, but. Let's see, we had been approached by Hamquairies about Union Road, they've been working with Liberty Township on a solution for some, some issues on, on Union Road between 1400 Avenue and Rock Quarry. You may or may not remember, but one of the, one of the things that came out of an agreement back in, I want to say it was about 1996, if you remember back, we, the county commission had imposed a severance tax on Rock, the two quarries filed a lawsuit against that, and long story short, the county lost, lost that battle, and at the same time, the quarries, both of the quarries operating at that time, agreed to provide the county some, some revenue in lieu of paying the severance tax, because they want to do, do what was right to help with the roads and damages to that. At the same time, there was, there was an agreement between the quarries and the township to provide them a certain amount of rock and road maintenance in that, on those sections of road that lead up to the quarry, and over the years, they've done a good job of doing that. John Strom with Hamquairies had contacted me, and then he contacted the township, and recommended that, basically explained to me that each year, they put a number, quite a substantial number of, amount of dust control and gravel on the two-mile section of road down around Union Town, on Union Road, and he was recommending that, rather than going in every year and putting the dust control in, if they go down and they chip seal a couple of sections of that road, and his analogy was that, they've done it in another location, in another part of state, they're going to spend more money up in that first year to chip seal it with, with that material, but then it'll last four to five years, and they don't have to do it every year, and in the long run, it'll provide a better service, and be cheaper for them, so it would be kind of a win-win, if they were, they're working on their budget for next year, and so he wondered what to do. We directed him to the township, John did some research and worked with them, and we recommend, supported the recommendation, however, our recommendation was that Hamquairies had to do the work, we, we weren't interested in doing the work, we've got too much going on, don't have the staff to do it, so that's been sent back to them, we're waiting on hands to determine whether or not they're going to put it in their budget to do it, the township, I think, supported it, so, if you hear any talk about that, you'll know what it is, but I think it will be a win-win for the people down there, a couple of the houses that they, they do dust control on, that could be positive for them. Once you do that, of course, you can't get on and blade it very much, or you kind of tear up the surface, so it would reduce the maintenance costs for, for the township as well in those sections, so, it's a little unconventional, but apparently it's worked in other places, and, and so.
They actually spray some oil on the.
Actually, they put, what I'm told is they put three to four chip seal layers on it.
Yeah, we've done that.
Instead of just, instead of just oil on it, like one layer.
Yeah, because if you just put one layer, you only have about.
They struggle with moving bigger rock, and then they find rock up as you go up, and it, it makes for almost an asphalt-like surface, so.
The biggest thing is you have, the base has to be solid, which we know about that.
Yeah, and basically what we've got down there with the rock, is they put rock on, and it, with the heavy traffic, it ends up being dust, and it's gone, and we, it's an evolving cycle, putting rock down, and this would, this will help keep the rock intact and prolong it, so.
This might be an experiment that we can kind of watch and see whether we want to pursue that with some of our rival roads or not.
Could very well be, that absolutely is probably the heaviest.
That would test.
Traveled road in the county as far as trucks and weight, so.
That would test to how long it would last, would last.
It'd certainly be a good test, so.
The only thing is, then, when you get into that cost, you know, the, putting four bits of rock on here is going to be fairly expensive, the MC800 or whatever they're using now, and you know.
Right, at least up front, if you, if you can afford to do it up front.
Right.
If it does last for four or five years.
But they're probably only talking, how many miles, I mean, they're talking quarter-mile, eight mile.
Well, yeah, it's a two-mile section, but we're only talking about doing like a half, half of each one of those miles.
Right.
Not doing the whole thing.
Just in front of the houses more than anything.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Where they've done the dust control and stuff before, it's my understanding, so. So it'll be interesting to see how it works now, but we, we put the ball back in Ham's court.
Yeah, because I mean, you start doing that, that two-mile of road, they couldn't afford to do that.
It's going to be expensive, I'm correct, so. Let's see, you've got, under your yellow tab, the financial reports from Janelle, and again, I didn't see too much out orders for your land here, I did notice that the sales taxes down this time, which is one of the first things I've been looking at, of course, but. It's down tonight, it was down? It's for February, $94,000. And I'm not exactly sure why that is, maybe it's people don't spend right after Christmas, but I see in 2014, it had dropped about $6,000 as well at the same time as where it was, so maybe that's, that's the natural cycle, but being down about $8,000 from the last month at this time, pretty substantial amount, so hopefully we'll see that increase, if it, if it's consistent with the previous year, it should go back up, so. But as far as the departments, everything's right in line, there's really nothing that concerns us, Janelle didn't have any concerns over it, unless you see something that you have a question about, so. I do have a meeting set, it's week after next, where myself and Chris Cox with Swab Eaton are going to go up to Topeka and meet with rural development on the Detroit sewer project, essentially, you know, I think I briefed you on that, but essentially, we're going to go up and see if there's, explain the problem, and see if there's any additional funding that they might be able to provide us, try and correct the problem at this point, so, it would be difficult to go back and borrow more money on that project, and if I lived in Detroit, I certainly would not entertain that thought, so.
Is this just going to be getting more water in here, or this be bringing the sewer system from Enterprise over to you?
Well, this, what, what we're going to approach him about is to do some work and divide that smaller cell into us, into what we think would be a workable cell, that would function properly with the affluent from Detroit. Right now, even the small cell is too big, and it doesn't get enough in there for the,
Should have about four foot of water.
For the process to work, exactly, and so it's going to take, going in there and dividing that cell up, it's going to take some dirt work, and, and to get that done. At the same time, we're going to talk to them about the possibility of having Enterprise come up and tie in, however, that expense will be on Enterprise.
Right, yeah.
You know, so, and Enterprise certainly isn't concerned, and isn't interested in paying for any corrective action.
Right.
That we've got to do now, and I understand that as well, so, we're hoping that, since they funded it and approved it to start with, that there may be some funding in an emergency like this that they can help with, to help get us back on track, because the issues that we've got are pretty, were pretty unforeseen, and the only other option we've got is to convince people in Detroit to start using more water, and flushing their toilets more, and that's, that's not a wise idea either.
But they have to flush a lot more.
In a day where, in a day where we want to promote conservatism, and you know, so, we'll see what happens, that's the first step, to go out and explain the issue to them, and see if they run us out, or whether, I mean, they won't even listen to us, so. And I have sent, I did send an email out to her this week, to the, to the five members of the Detroit Sewer Board, just kind of informing them the situation, and letting them, bringing up speed on what we're doing, so that they have some idea what we're working on, so. I explained to her, I read to you earlier, the letter I'd gotten earlier from a Harrington resident about giving kudos to Dustin Parks, about how he helped them, I will also note that that's certainly not the first letter, I do get quite a few letters from citizens about Dustin and his professionalism, and I very much appreciate that, he does a super job, so. Last thing that I've got is the Monday, as Craig had mentioned, we went over and met with noble township and the property owners on the bridge at Quail Road. Was asking for their opinion on what they felt would be appropriate for the area, to my surprise, the township said that they did not support vacating the road, they would like to see the right-of-way remain, although they would like to see us barricade it off, or give limited access to the property owners. We had some discussion about that, also talked to Mr. Poland about, you know, their interest in taking ownership of the bridge if we vacate it, and it seemed, at least, kind of the same, same feeling I got when I met with Bridgely, they're interested by all means, he still needs to check and see what his liability would be with, with his legal counsel, and, and go from there, so, I did explain to the township that you guys certainly have a final say-so on that, and that asking them was certainly, just giving their input respect as a courtesy, but that's kind of where we stand, I can show you if you want, kind of what we talked about here.
Yeah, you might, well, we're saying the, the Poland brothers, Limited LLC, John proposed that they vacate the road, you know, being the landowner and stuff, so he's.
Right, what we're talking about here is, whoops, this, this section of Quail Road, from where my mark is, up to here's a mile from 2800 or 2900, we would, what we, I think everybody was in agreement, whether, whether we vacate or just control it, is to put a gate right here at this corner, so that both this property owner comers and Paulans could get up here, that would barricade it up to this point, maintainer could still turn around in this field access, and then up here just south of, I think it'd just be over the hill here, past Craig's driveway, we would put another one that could clearly be visible, and that would restrict. we would put another one that could clearly be visible, uh, and that would restrict access in this whole area or vacate that whole area. Paulans own property on both sides of this, we had discussion about the benefits, they could just farm it together and have a path to get to their irrigation. And the bridge, of course, is, is this one right here and I can remove it now, we know what that road name is, I can take that off. So this is, this is a Quail Road Bridge, of course, that we're, we have closed, so. Uh, at this point, I guess I'm waiting on Paulans to decide what they wanna do with the bridge, but, uh, I guess it's kinda you guys' score as far as if you wanna.
Township didn't express why they was not interested in vacating that road?
Well, I guess they did, uh, their opinion was that, you know, in the future, each generation's.
They'd be remiss, they'd be remiss, they vacated a road and at some time there wanted to be a super road. That was a.
That's what was said, yeah.
That was said, a super road goes through there.
Yeah, so.
But they're willing to let us vacate the, the bridge, so, I mean, how do you put a super road into and have a bridge go across the creek?
And I think they were, they're a little bit concerned about what the future might bring and not knowing that, of course, I think we all are, but my opinion is, it's pretty safe to say this being river bottom ground and flood zone, that it's not gonna develop, so.
And, and I can't see that the county commission would ever, you know, it's gonna cost a million dollars now to, to replace that bridge that won't be spent and you go down the road, five, ten years, it's just gonna keep going up about a hundred thousand bucks a year.
That's what I say, I, I guess, you ever thought that the bridge would be replaced, but it, that.
That's not, that's not.
Doesn't look like that.
I don't see that happening.
See that happening.
Yeah. So what I did, I also in your packet, I gave you, uh.
Yeah, I saw that from Norm.
A copy of a, a story that Norm had done, I'd, I'd reached out to him for some advice and I've talked to Doug a little bit, sent him a message, asked a couple of questions, essentially we got the same answer from both of them, so that's good. But Norm had actually published an article, uh, some time ago about what to do with these bridges, and it's right in line with, if, if we wanted to vacate that, we can vacate it, declare it surplus and then it would go back to the, we could give it back to the property owner, they would take control of it. And, you know, the other, the other thing I gleaned from Norm's articles is certainly not something's unique to us.
Yeah.
It's pretty frequent happening across the state, so.
Well, and what I've seen Norm argue there too, that, I mean, the, if we do vacate it or something like that and they don't take it, it needs to be removed eventually.
Later we're gonna have to remove it, yeah.
Because you just can't, it becomes, it becomes more of a liability to, or get, you've seen some of the pictures there.
Right.
Which is an expense, but it's also a liability if you don't remove it.
So, uh, you know, where we're at, I guess, is we have, we need to decide whether we wanna vacate the whole thing or not sometime in the very near future and, and we need to, we'll have to hear from the Paulans whether or not they wanna take ownership of, of that bridge or whether we'll need to remove it, so. I, I mean, that's two questions I see.
Yeah.
At this point, so. Unless I'm missing something. Uh, nothing that requires action today, we, we'd need a petition from somebody to vacate it and, and then we process it just like the one in Elmo, but, uh, that's where we're at, so.
Uh, what's, okay, then the other option though is, do we declare it excess and, and just take the plank off of it and then eventually you're ready to tear it down?
Uh, resource the bridge?
Yeah, right.
If we wanted to leave the right of way there?
Yeah.
Well, if we wanted to leave the right of way there, we would just leave it closed and then we would just go out and take it, tear it down. We, we don't have to declare anything.
Right, that's, that's, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
We'll take the plank off.
If, no, if they, the Paulan brothers don't wanna take it, we don't have to go through any hearing to, to, you know?
No, we leave it the way it is.
And so we get time to tear it down.
Yeah, and we have the guys go out and take the plank off and, and either leave it set till it falls in or we go out, take, you know, take the crane out and lift it out and scrap it, burn iron, you know? So, but, that's, that's always an option too.
Yeah.
Uh, the last thing I've got has to do with the Bobcat lease and, and I think I told you that that was coming, you know, we, we lease a skid steer from one of the vendors every year. It's always been a Bobcat because Bobcats had their municipal lease program, but quite frankly is, uh, too good to be true and, and, uh, we quit owning one many years ago because we can get a brand new one every year for a fraction, not only a fraction of the cost, so. Uh, our lease is up in August, uh, on the first of September. Uh, however, we need to let them know here pretty quick so that they can make sure we have the machine built because, you know, be a brand new machine. We did, on the bottom of your, uh, briefing sheet, I put the date on that, that we listed the bids from, from three dealers, White Star in Topeka, Slade Bobcat and CTI here in, in Abilene on John Deere. White Star is the only Bobcat dealer that is continuing to honor the municipal lease and their bid was six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, the one thing to note to that is inclusive bid and that include, that, that we don't have to put any new tracks or anything on it at the end of the lease. Uh, CTI John Deere, their bid was, uh, twenty thousand eight hundred and then we have to put, uh, I said, at the end of the lease, we would have to put on a, uh, or that would include a new set of tracks at the end of it, which was about three thousand, so it was eighteen something on the, with the tracks, so. And then Slade Bobcat, Bob, Bobcat, he's applied to bid, uh, they told us that we, to continue the program with them, we needed to buy a machine from them and that cost was about sixty thousand dollars. So, we weren't really interested in that, as a matter of fact, they told us that Bobcat was no longer doing the lease and we got hold of White Star and they said, well, that's not exactly true, we can still do it, we'll be glad to, so. So what I would like to do when we get to that part is approval to go ahead and continue that lease and, uh, with White Star of Topeka so we can get that order placed and have the machine when the time comes, so. And I think that's all I've got, my senior Chris.
No, thank you, Brad, any other questions for Brad? Uh, Doug, uh, I'll introduce this as, uh, the gentleman, the ladies and gentlemen from the Abilene School District. It's our county counselor, Doug Thompson.
How are you? You're welcome, it'll be a test right after we get down here.
Don't go to sleep.
We're almost done though, just so you know.
Ain't it, Doug?
No, no, nothing that you haven't already been briefed on at the work session, probably.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Notice of communications, uh, got a renewal pit, room, permit renewal for permit number oh, one, oh nine, uh, Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the, uh, where do I put you? Oh, Randy Barton, for our landfill out there.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't, everybody get the newest county newsletter from?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we got a couple invitations, did everybody get from the post? I'm sure, I got them at home.
I'll probably attend Victory Week.
Okay.
June tenth and eleventh or whatever.
Okay. Uh, we got a report from the clerk of the district court on the fees and stuff. I'll look that later on. The Conservation District has started putting out a newsletter, uh, this is issue number one. They're gonna, you can get it online or you can have it mailed to you, they really have it online. They're gonna do it four times a year quarterly, uh, it's burning, wildlife habitat promotion, uh, awards, give who the winners were of the Conservation Award, they had it in our annual meeting in February. And then there's the poster winners. And then they also did that, which Laura spoke about, is the woman only ag nine and other stuff, so we got that newsletter. We got a report, uh, from the department head, uh, summary, uh, what we got remaining on our budgets and stuff. And then a spotlight, uh, from OCCK, uh, magazine from them and we got another NACO magazine.
I got one question here on the clerks. Fingerprint booking fees, now is that a charge that they charge or is that?
Yeah, they actually charge you, and when you're booked in a jail now, they charge you.
Yeah.
I think it's like fifteen dollars or something like that, now a lot of people don't pay that, but. But that's, and if you remember here several years ago, it changed the law where that can be done and we started assessing that fee. Is it revenue, is that what it is?
Well, that's what I was, my question was, I don't know if it's a revenue or expense according to that.
Is that, is that the sheet from the district court?
Yes.
That's probably where they have assessed that fee restitution through, under court cases, I would imagine, so.
It's a revenue.
Yeah, it's a revenue source, yeah.
Something that the judge.
But it's a revenue from where, I guess?
From the.
From the people that have been booked in.
Yeah.
It's like the court costs a fine added to the expenses, it's not a fine, but it's a cost associated with it. They pay for the book-in and they pay for the fingerprinting process, it's reimbursement for those costs.
Quite a bit of activity here in April.
But also could it be, Doug and Brad, you might know, is this employer needs to be, have you be fingerprinted? I mean, I was at Fort Riley, we had.
But that doesn't come through the district.
Okay, I didn't know what did or not.
We, we do charge for that, but that's charged directly in the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Yeah, it, the, the list from district court, that's, I'm sure.
That's just inmates.
By the, by the judge for inmates at the outcome of their, their court case, so. And it's, you know, to me, that's kind of appropriate, if you get in trouble, you go out and be processed, you should pay for it.
There are certain crimes, Laverne, that, uh, the, uh, court will send the, uh, person to be fingerprinted and they've built a database for the fingerprints and so that's part of it too. So there's a number of charges that can result in a requirement for fingerprinting.
Yeah.
And so those expenses are there.
Uh, introduction of notice, uh, introduction, consideration of resolutions, having none, move on to unfinished business, none. Other business, consider letter of support for the community development block grant program.
I think I emailed you a copy of that letter, uh, Barb just called to my attention and I had Lynn's name on his chairman. So if you approve the letter, I'll go over and reprint it here in a minute and on the way out, Craig wants to slide over and sign it, why? But that's, uh, that's the program that we entered into with Mitchell, Ottawa and Saline County. The grant program that no central regional planning commission's applying for and it's just a letter of support to go with their application, so.
I'd move that we go ahead and send this letter of support and, um, have Craig sign it on behalf of the commission.
I'll say that.
And moving to second, any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, receive petition for vacation, vac, vacation of right of way in Elmo and approve notice of hearing. Uh, the hearing date would be June eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, that's eleven-ten.
I'd move that we go ahead and set that hearing date, June eighteenth, eleven-ten a.m. and receive the petition for vacation right of way in Elmo.
Second, any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, last thing that's on the agenda, our other business, is, uh, bids from the vendor for the lease of the skid steer with two thousand fifteen, sixteen year. Brad, you wanna, you already put a little bit on it?
Yeah, that's, uh, again, the, the, uh, lease for the Bobcat from White Star Machining, they were the little bid, really the only bid that was even competitive. And by doing that now, it, for a delivery date in September, that will allow them time to get the order in, get the machine built and have it running, so.
I move that we accept the bid from White Star Machine from, at Topeka for a Bobcat track loader for the cost of six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second. Then moving to second, any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any other business came before the commission today, not all, entertain a movement? Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Or adjourn.